This conference will now be recorded.
Look at that, perfect timing.
I'm so sorry. I totally forgot where I put clarity.
After you said it perfectly.
I was sorry everybody.
No, I was like taking a minute to relax, make a coffee before the meeting. I was sending emails, I think, did you get an email from me? So I was thinking of.
Yeah, I did.
I was emailing the building commissioner about the appointment that we did last week. And I'm thinking, I'll get down there early at 5:50, sorry.
Alright, but you start time-wise.
So they actually opened up their media where I.
Yeah.
There's a minutes, I put forward an appropriation for fire department compensation.
Yeah.
And county.
We should technically open our meeting, which we didn't get.
Oh, okay. About 44, we'll call this a life board to order on Tuesday, July 9.
Roger, is that the, just to finish up that last thought.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
We have all three members present here.
So just a little bit, that completes the payout.
That was going to be part of my, for on the compensation piece, that was going to be part of my, on the select board appropriation transfer request, I do have something to follow up on that, two other departments, small.
I mean, the last request that we approved, is that the.
That should be it for that.
That should be it.
Yeah, yeah, because I.
That's what I was saying.
That's what I was trying to get some verification from the treasurer and the accountant, but that was the, I just ran that report this afternoon and should cover, it's supposed to have covered all of the final payouts, all of the final payroll for the fiscal year. Okay, so.
Do we have anything else on the hour?
No, I was just giving you a brief, like just tell Steve why, you know, just remind him why we thought this meeting was a good idea, the way the committees have been working together, like, do you want to do it?
One thing the select board could just do is approve these and then we'll be done with that.
Okay.
And then we can talk.
Okay.
The rest of the meeting.
So just to briefly recap.
Yeah.
Because we, Roger, thought everything was all set, but it turned out there was one week that, like that hang week, that was still outstanding, so the fire department needed a little more and we took it from cleaning.
The custodial.
Custodial cleaning that's now done by.
Yeah. And then the other was just a miss.
It was just, yeah, because of all going back, yeah, on vacation with the previous town administrator, so that got, that got that out of the car. So all of the, all of the wages line items are either at zero or slightly even positive. Those would be.
Including highway overtime.
Including highways.
No, nice.
Yep, that's actually at zero. I checked that as well, so that got put to zero. So that sort of told me that all of my, all of the previous reserve fund transfers and appropriations have been accounted for, because that one I knew was going to be zero, so it's actually at zero.
Alright, well, I'll move that we approved these two transfer appropriation requests.
Okay.
And then we'll call both.
Right.
Yes, yes, and yes.
And sticking to budget, I do have, I'm still following up on two departments, parks and COA. Just trying to get a little bit, there may be a negative, but I'm trying to understand where that negative is in there. It's either in a line item or the overall department expense, because I was informed of that late yesterday afternoon, I think it was, so I'm just trying to figure that all out. So that might be the only thing that's a negative, but worse comes to worse, it gets put into an encumbrance, it just gets pulled over because it's just invoices that get put over the encumbrance and just.
And just on the topic of compensation, because that's what these were for. Just so everyone knows, when we changed over the new payroll system, the way that elected people and other people get stipends changed. And there's been a number of pickups since then. Last year, the school committee rep didn't get paid, and so if you recall, at town meeting, we had to make sure that she got paid in the previous fiscal year. This year, we tried to wrap up all the loose ends, but it was kind of a last minute rush, because some members had been paid for a couple months, some members had been paid for 12 months. I was paid for 12 months, but one month came out of fire department accidentally. So I was only paid from select board for 11 months, and the last month I had the money, but it was from their own account, so. Long story short, there's been, for a number of reasons, whether it's user input error, and that's a lot of what it's been, but frankly, you're asking elected officials with relatively small stipends in many cases to put in, you know, once a month, these amounts, and we're looking at a different system. Whether that's, it gets automatically put in every two weeks, because it seems like that's the only automatic way to do it. Whether it's a lump sum, or maybe a quarterly thing, that's easier to keep track of than, than monthly with a number of people and asking them to go in and put it on their own, just is a big problem.
Usually, it seems to me like every place else I've ever been, if you sign up for, you know, automatic deposit, it's automatically deposited.
It's automatic.
You're not salary, you're not constantly going.
No, you have to trigger something on every angle with a stipend.
What happened last year was a problem with the taxes.
Yeah, right.
And the past administration changed to where you had to put it in, because the first three months I'd never put it in.
Well, actually, the system was actually functioning the same exact way.
Yeah, but she was.
The town administrator was just going in and doing it for you.
Right.
But then the expectation changed that everyone would kind of do their own. The point being, we can probably make it automatic, but as I understand it, automatic has to be every two weeks.
Within our pay period, there can't be like.
But who cares?
Which is kind of fine, Susan, the only thing is that we're talking.
You have to certify that.
It becomes ridiculous.
Every two weeks for certain people.
Yeah, right.
I mean, for select board is going to be small, but for board of assessors, it's going to be painfully small, and for board of health, I think it might be even smaller.
It's like, it's like $16 compared to.
You can't do monthly.
You should work right with checks.
You can't do monthly, like 15, 30.
Or a one-time, don't.
Really, really small.
No, we're looking into it. We don't need to overanalyze.
Okay, right. That's a good, jumping off point, I may, just good, we're all on the same page here, just want to bring together why the finance committee asked me to the select board. So over the last year and a half, two years, we have made some significant changes in the budget. We've been trying to do a zero-based budget, since Frank and I were on the finance committee together and then Roger, and that's why you see much closer budgeting and not so many overdrafts. So we're really going to continue that with Roger this year, we want to stand for that. We also have spent a significant amount of time, and we'll do those, Justin, and Frank, for, you know, anything that wasn't in the right place, that didn't make sense, that we weren't sure how we took it, you know, you've seen that on the town warrants and all that, and we've really cleaned up and really, you know, kept track of what we need to do. So there are some things that we've done that have really helped, but there's a bunch of outstanding issues. So we thought it would be good to debrief on what worked well, and then the finance committee, apart from Steve joining, had a list of things that we know we want to work on this year, and what we've done during budget season, which worked really well. We all have independent voices, but we've paired a select board member with a finance committee member, and they go work on it together. So me and Justin might be doing debt service, you know, you and Frank might be doing fire, you know, Steve, you know, somebody else is doing community center fees, so that at budget, it's not a crisis, and we've been working on it, you know, for the whole year, and have a plan, both committees are informed.
Yeah, I think we have the budget policy that we've been more or less following for a couple of years in a very similar way. I think we can follow that again.
It seemed to flow pretty well this year, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think more of the things we need to focus on are structural. I think that we've kind of really figured out the timing of the different budgets and a lot of the cleanup, and I think that's why Mark talked to me, a lot of the departments are getting much smarter now about what they want and what line and why, and where they might have over it, so I know Roger's managing that. So I think overall, we're totally moving right there.
I mean, I don't think that they're ever going to, there's always going to be issues that come up with any process you have. I don't think it's ever going to be that nobody ever has an issue, or no one's upset that something got caught, or that they have to, like, finagle, but on the whole, I thought it went, it was in the blue box.
It's not going to be a process, not, not what we're talking about. An issue like you say, but it's a process, a good process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the open communication that these meetings and really discussing it. So I can go through the list, because that's really what we, you know, like, we all have the same big question about the budget spreadsheet. There's an old document that we're working on, there's some legacy problems, where formulas are wrong, where it's not populating. There's not a separate personnel budget, so it's kind of like, excuse the expression, backwards, that we have to come up with a polla, and then the departments each do it, instead of us just being able to apply that, whatever the polla is after we decide, instead of setting it free. So there are some changes we can make that would be better, but I know Susan's worried about it, we all are, because what happens is, we are, Frank, me, Jeff, since we've been on the committee, Roger, like to do analysis, how much did it change? What happened? What percentage is done? And every time we got a new copy of the spreadsheet, we lost it, and there was no ability, at least under the prior town administrator, to actually keep those changes, or give us a change sheet, or keep any kind of analytics. So we wanted to think about how we could rebuild that spreadsheet, if it's worth rebuilding, you know, make it right, so that we can have analytics, we can have better information, and maybe there's a way of doing some kind of shared drive, where certain people have access rights and certain people have changing rights, so that we make sure we're always working off the most updated and all of those.
I just continue to emphasize the importance of having a number of people that can actually change something, very limited, because otherwise, things do get.
Is that what we need, two?
Max.
Yeah. One primary and one if that person is.
Is enabled.
Is made.
I think, and I think I agree, the difficulty has kind of always been that the select board and finance committee don't always meet together. So the finance committee may say, we want to drop to 30,000 to 20,000, but should, what would be the, the process for getting something changed in the actual budget, would be approval from both bodies, or one, or the other? That's going to pick up.
I think part of the answer to that is what, what we've been talking about from time to time, and even when I spoke to the last town administrator, is to have a change sheet with changes memorialized. But if the number is $10, just, and I think it should be 12, so I write as, however it's formatted, but I write as a TA, I think it should be 12. Frank goes in and says, no, I think it should be 11, okay? And he, and maybe we didn't actually tentatively change it to $11. Then that's there. We see though, that we started at 10, it went to 12, now it's to 11. At some point, we have to finalize it for the town meeting, and then it gets finalized, but we can track what the reasoning was for the changes, because otherwise, there's so much, there's, you know, how many lines on that, on the warrant, you know?
And how many times does something get changed?
And how many subcategories go into a line that don't even show up on the warrant? So the ability to be able to go back and say, okay, on this particular line item, here was the rationale for it, and whatever we finally decided, is one of the, we don't have to go back through minutes of meetings and trying to figure out, how did it get from 10 to 12, and then it was 11, was it ever 12, and what, we have, we have some history there.
So right now, we're talking about two separate processes. One is a change document, so it's almost like our face sheet for the reserve fund, every decision that's made, so we know why we made it, right? Like a running total, which I think is a great idea, because, you know, Justin goes, I have to go back through everything, then we do it, you know, have to rebuild. So that's a good idea. The other thing is, who can actually go in and make those changes? So I just Googled, a shared drive spreadsheet, can we limit access to tabs, because it has to be the whole spreadsheet? So we can decide if we want to rebuild the database, if it's Google Drive, or Google Sheets, or Excel, but we can limit access to different tabs. So we can have the main budget sheet, that it's only the town administrator or select board, and then we can have an analytic sheet that the finance committee can make changes to, but it's linked, so we'll, we'll have advantage of whatever changes are made.
There are changes here.
Right, but we'll do the analytics, he doesn't have to, so we have access on the analytic sheet, but we might not have access on each departmental budget or something. So that, so it does take a rebuilding effort, and, you know, that spreadsheet, I don't know if you remember it, Steve, has been, that budget spreadsheet has been around for many, many years, we all found a lot of formula problems and mistakes.
And it's unwieldy.
Yeah, and then it, yeah. So what do you think?
Plus tabs are having a.
Although I have to confess that if all of the pages were, if we attempted to put all of the department pages on a single sheet.
No, no.
That would be equally unwieldy.
No, I think there are two steps. I think the tabs work, but I think, you know, there, there are some things, now that we've updated the budget, like putting a personnel budget separate with the colas, so we should know exactly. There are certain ways.
If we spur our contemplation.
Yeah, there's.
If it doesn't show up that way in the warrant, it doesn't happen.
Exactly, but how we slice and dice it. So I think there's an effort, and it really comes down, you know, to Roger, if, you know, I know I'm happy too, and I, you know, I can't speak to the rest, but I know Jeff is, and I know Frank loves the spreadsheet, you know, to really sit and think about, what's the best way to redo the spreadsheet? How do we want it? What are the formulas? What do we want to automatically update? It's really good with that effort. And we might want to use, you know, we have those consulting hours for someone? I don't know if we have any left, the other.
Not for financial, that I know of. We have HR.
No, 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 we have that, they're doing something else for you, what's her name, the woman, the debt service woman?
Sarah Hunter, the treasurer.
But we can also talk to the office, the local, what type of office?
Yeah, local services.
Yeah, because other towns might have one that we can, that works, that we have to recreate it.
Well, maybe that's actually, Eileen, if the finance committee is up for it, maybe, maybe really the way to look forward on this is just to talk to other towns and see what they're using.
What do you think?
There are, I'm confused who has access to changes to the spreadsheet.
So what we've done, the past, what we've done the past number of years is pretty simple. The town administrator keeps one, and then they would send it out once a week, maybe sometimes more frequently, sometimes less frequently, depending on how often.
What was happening.
What was happening. And essentially, all changes were made by the town administrator. You could take it on your computer and, and make any changes you wanted, but the next week, we'd get a new one that was from the town administrator.
Didn't have the. So nobody else can adjust the.
That is the way it has to really work.
That's important. Too many master copies, they interrupt the.
But the problem is that on that master copy, whatever analysis or notes, or that's what we're talking about, the change, were lost every time. We had to go back through them, that's the problem.
Twenty-plus tabs to see, what's the change I contemplated, picked up?
Where was it?
You know, and also the other piece of this is the dashboard that you've been talking about, which rolls all of this up, so that you've got, you know, one page where you can say, okay, these are the major changes. The reports we get from the accountant, that's 250 pages of, of information, and yes, one report, I think it's only, whatever, 80 pages.
Yeah.
Even 30 pages, but it's not rolled up into a dashboard. So the idea of having it rolled up, so that we know on the major budget categories that show up on the warrant, it parallels the warrant, so that we can then say, okay, gee, you know, roads is generally in line. We don't know all the separate line items, but we know roads is in line, or we know that, that, you know, police is in line, or town protective services, whatever it's called, is in line. We know that those are in line. And we know this one's a little out. So all of this fits together in a plan which allows all of us, the finance committee, select board, and the town administrator, to be able to do our fiduciary responsibilities during the year of being MRTs and manager, and then in budget season, being able to say, okay, these are the changes, these are the changes we picked up, and here's why, and we reversed something, we know we're reversing. I have a hard time, we're all busy, and I have a hard time taking a spreadsheet that's this wide on my computer and recognizing change that happened on line 32 on tab 17. And that's really hard to pick up.
One thing that we did implement this year, but I don't think, with you so inclined, with the prior town administrator, was for each budget, if you notice, if you scroll down, I did have her keep a log of every change she made, so that we can look at each budget and say, okay, that did happen, or that didn't happen, but that was selectively applied. But it, it was a start, and that goes to the change sheet, so that could be part of the conversation about, you know, when we do our due diligence, how do they track changes, where I went, because I thought that was helpful, right?
And some people track it on the line, so I would leave this up to Roger. So if line 101, you know, was changed, then on line 101, there's, 101, there's a new column with a tiny comment, you know, July 9 increased because of this, and there's one little sentence, and then it's there. And the next column might be July 16, it decreased.
I think we've forensized that whatever system we pick, we're clear about what it is, and we try to be consistent, at least within that budget year.
Absolutely.
So you're not having some comments to the side, and some comments below.
And some on this page, but not on that.
And I, and I think another big decision is, is just, yeah, keeping it consistent. But, Eileen, I don't want to rush that discussion, but if you think we're ready to move on, if you want to tackle some other.
Can I just chime in there? I actually didn't have a problem with the budget sheet that we, that we had, because I think I see things after 23 years of being in the municipal world, I see things a little differently, and I, I didn't have a problem with it. I do understand where, I like the idea of a change sheet, so something that's kind of separate from all that, and then trying to figure out a way to incorporate that change sheet, change sheet into the tabs that say, okay, you know, Jeff made a suggestion in the board of assessors that this, this be changed. Because the problem that I think you run into is that bouncing back and forth from $1 value to the next dollar value, to the next dollar value, to the next dollar value, because six people have all decided that this one line item should have a different rate. And so where does it, where does it actually land? And I think that's where the conversation happens, and just knowing what's going on, because what you're talking about by having that kind of access is actually an online budget application, where there's different, different sections that are dealt with, and those roll down into a single thing, and we don't have that, so.
Another thing I'm cautioned about is, it's a major undertaking to change. Two is, you do have historical information in the back tabs about previous issues and practices.
Yeah.
So the other is, we haven't gotten you help like you need to undertake a major change in the works.
But there are, there are some definite changes that I'm.
Well, if you want to, I would leave it up to you to fine tune it, because ultimately, it's your responsibility, and you have good budget experience, but starting from scratch, I'd be very cautious about it.
So this is what I'm hearing, to close out this discussion, we have some things we all kind of agree to and want. One is consistency, so whatever the rules are for the sheet, you know, we just want to, we want to make sure we're applying them, and they should be written down. The second is, we want to limit overall access to change, to be really, I think, the same with the town administrator, right? Right, we want, I do the backup person from the select board, we want to be able to track changes.
I like that idea.
Yeah, so we like, we want to be able to track changes. We also want to find a way, which we don't have a solution now, for continuity of analytics. And it might be that you're a different person, Roger, that you want to build that in, and, you know, you're happy to build in those columns into the spreadsheet. And then I would suggest a separate personnel budget, so we're not always under begun to make that polla decision, you know, in January, when we don't really know the whole situation, to somehow separating, I, I don't think we have to separate it out, I think we just have to figure out how to apply it separately, the departments.
I was just going to say, I don't think you necessarily need to change the departmental things. What you need is a thing that.
That fools each of those.
That's what I'm saying.
For that.
To look at overall.
So I think those are the one, two, three, four, I think those are five things.
The other is access, I don't mean access to make the changes, but access to see. If you send out, if whoever, if the town administrator sends out a revised copy of the spreadsheet once a week, or every other week, or something like that, and it happens to be 10 o'clock on Tuesday night, and I want to work on this, because we still have three loans firing.
You only have three.
And you, and you, it's not going to come out until Monday, and I'm working on old stuff. So I need to be able to view it, I don't have to change it, but I need to be able to view it at whatever time to at least be able to know that I'm looking at the most recent thing, and I'm not looking at something.
So for number six, A, user-friendly and timely access, okay?
I'm, I'm keeping it in minutes, too, yeah.
Google Sheets, like, something like Google Sheets allows you to have online, real-time access, even, even, you can have editorial access, or you can just have viewing access, he's talking about viewing access.
So does Excel.
And a shared drive. Can Excel, but in a shared drive.
And each of them allows you to decide what tabs people can view and change, and what they can't, right?
So we could actually make it so, right, that A and one other person has.
Exactly, and then the analytics page maybe we all have. So to close out, so to close out the discussion, we have the six principles, it's in Roger's bailiwick, and we'll help you as needed, you know, to move forward. But that would be good, James, okay? The next one on our list was debt service.
Just to update you, Steve, you may or may not have known that over the past couple of years, there have been some pickups with debt service paydowns. A couple of years ago, we had $50,000 approved at town meeting to make a paydown, and only $30,000 was put against it. I forget why, there was no really good reason. We ended up just encumbering that money and making sure it was put against, the following year, it cost us a few thousand dollars in interest. This year, we took out a loan on a truck that hadn't been ordered yet, and we actually signed the note, yeah. So that was, that's problematic, that's going to cost us a few thousand dollars in interest. We've been pretty good about paying down everything that we owe money on, and we have chosen to pay for a few vehicles out of free cash, out of the stabilization fund, and to avoid additional debt, especially since we have the fire truck, the huge expensive fire truck coming up, which will probably overlap with the library for a couple of years, before we're done paying off the library. What we probably have to do this upcoming cycle is just decide how aggressive we want to be with the paydowns again. We probably won't owe anything on the fire truck for another year or two. And I think we've had some discussions about how do we, how do we get debt service to a place that we're all comfortable with, where the right people are taking the right actions, and there's proper checks and balances to make sure that, to make sure that everything that we're doing is, is right, because at the end of the day, you know, town meeting, we only have debt on a few items, I think it's four, maybe now, maybe five, and we're close to paying off for a couple of them. But we've had difficulties too with our, with our banker, and the projections that we get back are for the wrong amounts, and they don't even include interest paydowns, and we might, just going forward, we're looking at ways to kind of streamline debt service.
Did we ever, did we ever have an opportunity to reach out and say, can we change from the other bank? Is there something else that could serve that for?
I think that's what we need, I think that's what the working group needs to do.
So the treasurer, actually, that's something that's next on the select board agenda, is the treasurer contract. Because the treasurer is responsible for, you know, resolving debt, and responsible for kind of that relationship with the bank. So that's a discussion we can definitely have, but I don't know.
And she hasn't been incredibly responsive on that, right, on that one issue.
We're trying to get a contract.
Yeah.
Square away.
So this is also, I don't mean to sell this point, but this is also where information becomes important. And that, one of the items on the dashboard, there were one of the sections on the dashboard, it's about the debt service, as well as account balances, things like that, because it felt to me, last year, that's a, we find this meeting, and it may feel like this to Steve, I don't know. But that, given the mandate of our responsibility, that we didn't have the information clearly at hand to at least have oversight, to at least be looking at the numbers. So if you said to me, is there four or five, we should be able to look down and say, it's five. We should be able to look down and say, well, right now, today, or as of the first of the month, we owe, we have this much, what's the initial? Purchase price, we paid down this much so far, and we owe this much at this percent. And we should be able to track that each month, or if it has to be each quarter, each quarter, but we should be able to track that. So we have these conversations, we can look and say, wait a second, how come this truck number didn't change? This particular debt number didn't change? Or it changed by a large amount in this month.
And it's actually simpler than that, Jeff, because what we've been doing is taking out one-year notes.
Yes.
So it's really once a year.
Yeah.
That in the fall, either October, November, everything comes due, and we pay off, um, the interest that we all want for the year.
That should be in right place.
Whatever principal that we pay down, the, the, it's, to some degree, happens twice a year, because in the spring, we need to decide how much principal we wanna pay down. And then in the fall, we need to actually put that money against it, and then we need to decide, are we gonna borrow on a year-to-year basis again? Are we gonna get something more, uh, permanent?
Okay, should I?
In coming up, just to speak to like this year, in the fall, we're gonna need to make a decision when we go to pay off the one-year notes. Do we want to do a one-year note for everything again? And we've stuck with that in part because we've chosen to pay off the principal more than required each year. So we'll have to make that decision in the fall, and then in the spring, we'll need to make the decision on how much.
Just for clarity, by the way, because this was a shock to me, and frankly, I think it is to most people who haven't had a lot of municipal interaction before. There is no, like, on a mortgage, a regular home mortgage, you can pay down early. You cannot do that on municipal.
I, I get that. I'm just talking about the ability to have the actual number.
Yes.
Ready access on what you're paying down.
Right, can I make a suggestion, cuz I think there's steps to get there? So one thing I'm going to do is those two decision points that you said, Justin, I'm gonna add them to the town budget process calendar, so we remember when we have to make them. So that's the first thing I'll put in, right? So that's been a very helpful tool, and I think that really added to the ease of the process, everybody knowing when to do things. The second thing is, do we need a capital, a, a, a debt service policy plan? Do we just need a written documentation of what you've just said, two times a year, these decisions? Because we know since we're a cash budget, you know, we can only do it on a year basis, or are we all on the same page, and we don't need that?
I don't think we really need a policy, because we've never, we never forget, you know, they want the money, yeah. But the point be, when that kind of year comes, it would be very helpful, you know, the select board will, you know, tell the finance committee, and the select board itself, and the town administrator, need to go back to the town meeting minutes and say, do the town meeting minutes match up with what we're being told we're doing?
The, the town, on special articles, the town votes for the amount of debt service per item, per vehicle.
Yeah, and we've got them all separate.
Okay, so the town meeting did vote for that, so we, we don't have to guess when time comes to the debt service, how much to pay.
We don't have to guess, we have to double check.
Double check, because it hasn't been the case consistently the last few years.
But if you.
That what happened matched, right?
They're like a white at the town minutes.
But, right.
You don't even have, once the town votes, then the town administrator can put that on like a dashboard. And it says, this was the decision that was made on May third, twenty twenty-four. Which we know all, all year what that is. We don't have to start going back and research.
Well, I'm working with the treasurer as we speak. We've added to the contract, which is not finalized, review town meeting minutes to the duties of the treasurer, because it's that simple. So we don't need it in additional places. It's, it's all there.
Except, if, if you, the finance committee does have a dashboard, so if you wanna add a box with that on, so he knows exactly the information, it, it's not.
I'm not opposed to putting it there. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so you might wanna add it to our dashboard.
If you're gonna come to the finance committee, select where the finance committee have to make a decision on something. Rather than six months after a meeting, or whatever the time is, going back and trying to find the minutes of that meeting. You just document it on the same summary sheet right away, so it's there, and we know, hey, this is what was decided, and we don't try.
And I actually think those are in keeping with each other.
Yes.
Because step one is, let's try it and improve the likelihood that the treasurer will get it done correctly. And step two is, let's continue to track what the issues are, so that there's a backup to double check that.
And because.
Both of those things, people make mistakes, and having that, that check and balance makes a lot of sense.
So there are benefits.
Tracking it when it happens, making sure that the treasurer is on board with making sure she tracks it, and then double checking that it happened. All seem like good steps.
It's also really important for new people.
Yeah.
Because the new person comes on the finance committee, and they're so important, doesn't know any administration necessarily, unless they were. Like you, Susan, you went to almost every meeting for I don't know how many years of everything.
That's, plus I got yelled at, and the person was right.
But a lot of people will come onto a position, as I did. I was relatively new to the town, but I was very interested. But I didn't have the history, I didn't have the background, and I came on, came in, and, and it's like, so where is this information? Any other board I've gone on or finance committee, you've got maybe more information than you want, but you had to summarize.
Right.
So you can see, okay, this is where we are. You're three months into the budget year, you're fifty percent over on this line, and ten percent under on that line, or on this category. And you can see the loans, you can see what the debt service is, you can see this, you know, investment monies, you can see whatever their pension, whatever you need to see.
I would love, if the finance committee is willing to be the one that, that creates this dashboard, or all the things that are supposed to be on there, even if it ends up getting populated by the town this year, having the idea, the clarity on what, like this detail in there, and that would be great.
Well, Roger has, Roger has that, and, and I'm, and I'm willing to help Roger as much as he wants, but I also wanna give him the ability to create it in a way that's easiest for him.
For him, right.
And then it's not gonna be a fixed document. It's gonna be something that I think will involve over a few years.
Well, like everything else.
Right, and we'll say, hey, we didn't have this number, or hey, we don't need this number, like, Jeff, you were all psyched about this number, but we haven't used it in three years, drop it off, you know?
But I also think we're talking about something that we didn't talk about, which is, the budget gets adopted, this has been a history of this town, the budget gets adopted at town meeting, and we don't really revise and say, here's what was adopted in the budget. We don't work off of that. We kinda go back to the warrant, so like, you need some kinda final, like, here's what I'm working. I mean, it should be codified in the, um, line item, in the account, and in the chart of accounts. We should now, okay. All right, but debt service isn't in there, or it is?
In.
The chart of accounts.
Uh, yeah, it's in there.
It's in.
I, I don't know. When I was a town accountant, I took the warrant.
Right, that's right.
And I put my line into the computer, general ledger, so I'm assuming that's.
That's what we do. Uh, there was.
I'm sorry, I meant also decisions, because, right, like the Lake Garfield working group got dropped years ago, there've been other things that haven't, you know, so it's not just the accountant's job, the town administrator, any other administrative actions that have to happen, we'd be good at following up. I'm not saying we add it, I just think.
The one thing I'd like to say in that conversation is that it's very dangerous to look at budget variances interim. This is an annual budget. We don't break it down by month. So if you look at a budget variance, that more money has been spent, or it's already all totally spent, that may be appropriate.
Yeah, we look at the seasonality.
On it in August, and it's.
And the seasonality.
No, we.
It's very dangerous looking at interim stuff on an annual budget.
Yes.
Sometimes you might ask, oh, yeah, we don't do that until February. That's like this.
But.
And some of that may be the particular line.
Yeah, the seasonality, we've gotten used to.
Yeah, it's important, because I know it's crazy. Pants in a dress, I'm like, this is.
Yeah, right, that's snow and ice. It's not happening till December, right? Let's blame snow and ice.
It's very difficult. It's always been a problem, but it's an annual budget, right?
Yeah, so I have three actions, really. So you're getting, you're working on a treasurer contact, contract. We're gonna add it to the budget calendar, and we're gonna add an item on the finance committee dashboard, so you remember what it is.
Somewhere along the line, the, the bank, but each piece of equipment in the past was a separate note. Somewhere along, we got a new thing compared to, I was a town accountant ten years ago, so lots of change in ten years, but.
We do keep them separate, though.
So they're separate notes.
When we borrow, the, you'd have to talk to the accountant treasurer to get more clarity, but we have never merged, because of Nikki, we've never merged items. Uh, because that's been an offer, and you want to take out a lump sum. But then again, when we do borrow, I think we borrow it all once, so it's a good thing, but it's beyond my pay grade. Do you really know what's going on? Uh, Nikki?
So, in the past, I just think two years, cuz I do keep track of this, you know that. Uh, I am especially interested in making sure that the library loan is always taken care of appropriately. But in the past two or three years, we've added to having, uh, highway trucks on there. And they, the loan is one amount for all three items, but they are listed separately and kept separately, but it's all under one loan, under one interest rate, one loan. Purchased by one.
Even though the life of the asset finance could be very different, like a truck is five years, a fire engine is four years.
Before we get bad info. But because it's only one, it's only a one-year loan.
So one, one might drop off, you know, I think this one truck is gonna be done this year.
We had to calculate how much everything would be, like the lifespans, and we had to set those, but at the end of the day, the, the total amount was the same tomorrow. So it's confusing.
Just so you know, we get a minimum principal paydown for each item. So instead of saying, oh, you have to pay two hundred thousand dollars minimum, we get, you have to pay seventy thousand for this minimum, fifty thousand for this minimum. Um, they are kept separate to a degree.
I, I sort of think of it like a credit, that's not a credit line, but I sort of think of it that way, when I, when I've had credit lines before. And thinking, well, okay, that, this much for this, you have this much for this, you have this much for the library, but the bank is requiring that it all be paid off by December thirty-first. But I'm still thinking about, this is what's going on for each of the separate elements of it. I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful.
It's not a variable rate loan, right? It's a fixed rate.
It's fixed for the year, one year.
It's a variable.
I bet it's a variable.
It, it'll, it'll end up variable, cuz it'll be different rate to next year.
Yeah.
But it's a one-month term, one-year term.
Okay, so we have three agreements, and then obviously, if we wanna change, provider of any other questions, you know, the finance committee stands ready to help you do any of that due diligence or help.
Well, also, I think first and foremost, it's just having educated and diligent people on, around the table. Because when it comes to time to pay down things, if there are people, especially like you, Steve, since you've been in the trenches before, that can look at the town meeting minutes, and look at what we're doing, and just make sure we're all squared away, that's enormously helpful.
Yeah, continuity, that's our.
What were your three points? Treasurer contract?
Treasurer contract, add debt service decision points to the budget calendar, and Jeff's gonna put it on the finance committee dashboard, so we know how many items, five, four, and a separate amount, since on the line item, it's one sum. Is that what you said?
I think there is.
Yeah, okay, we'll go with that, and our next finance committee will do it. All right, you wanna move to the next one? All right, Mark. Stay in here, you wanna move to the next one?
I just asked.
The, oh, Susan just asked, as a treasurer contract, we almost had time to meet yesterday, it didn't work out. We almost had time to meet today, it didn't work.
Just like the debt service.
We're kind of waiting. I propose two times for tomorrow. So, I thought we had a time for today, but.
And it is part of, like, there's the contract part, but there's also the question of, once that's done, does she have any recommendations for what to do at this?
With you, I know.
I was really, it's not just me. I have not, it's two years now. I'm like, this guy makes no sense, and then this year, he even gave us terrible numbers.
Yeah.
So like, it's really upsetting.
Um, so, uh, the finance committee is a member, what are we, members? We have to go find them.
NMA, oh, no, it's.
NNA. I find them a great resource, so we can talk to them if you are in the chat.
Well, I, let's, uh, it's with the treasurer, if I understand, it's the treasurer's responsibility to secure loans, so we can talk to her and tell her that we wanna look at that.
Yeah, but you did not have.
Well, you did last year, we're not gonna like, I don't wanna do, give the runaround.
No, we don't wanna do that. It's not helpful.
I just wanna reemphasize that I don't wanna do this at the eleven thousand, right?
That's why we're doing the.
It's coming in October, and I would like, oh, I wanna, in two months, I want a new person looking at that, because this guy, two years in a row, was completely incoherent.
Yes, that's.
And I thought the first time, I thought, it's just me, I don't know what's going on, but no, it turned out, nobody present in that meeting had a clue.
Right.
And then here, too, he gives us that sheet that had a bunch errors, and I foolishly trusted those others, right? But no, you caught him, thank goodness. But I, that really two strikes, and I'm feeling pretty unsure about trusting anything that's offered from that office.
So one of the things that we started to do, in terms of getting our house in order, of these kinds of things, is we started to look back during the zero-based budget, and we started to look inside our own house. And what our own process was for the budgeting, for financial management, for being aware of what's happening financially. Next, another step of the process is to then go outside of our own house. So what are our financial relationships? What's the relationship with the debt service? What's the relationship with our bank slash banks? What's, when we start to look there? That's kind of part of our own process of, I think, the old term continuous improvement.
Right.
Part of the process of that is to then say, gee, do we need to, as we were talking earlier today, do we need to investigate changing our banking relationship? We have a pretty lot of money that goes into the bank and goes to.
I'm putting it right out there. I am not content with you.
Well, if you're not content with you, then should we, in this joint meeting, or in a subsequent meeting, should we come up with a work group? That's gonna look at the three other options, and say, you know, first I'll say, what are we getting from you, bank? What are the problems? And then do some investigations.
No, I, I think it would be like having a problem with, with, you know, a specific employee in the department, and instead of going to the department head, trying to micromanage, so.
Okay, so we consider.
This is all really the responsibility of the treasurer.
Perfect.
So Roger and I are gonna meet with her, and, and we'll have those discussed.
And I think we're just reiterating that we wanna actually raise those questions. We wanna raise the bar.
As soon as it's not comfortable with you, then say that to the treasurer. We're not comfortable with you.
Right, we said that, but we need to.
So, just so everyone knows, we got a spreadsheet last year about projected different paydowns, and there were more numbers that were wrong than.
Right, so that's a big concern.
And they were simple things that could be counted on the town meeting minutes. Again, town meeting minutes are only a few pages long.
But if we're talking about five and a half million dollars.
Right.
On a budget.
All right, let's move on then, because I think we need to know what needs to happen. We know, we know what needs to happen. Your charges, treasurer contracts, we're all in agreement, which is good, and we'll continue to discuss that later. So we definitely wanna put something in the calendar before October, when the next.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna hear, it'll be fine. That it's not fine.
No, so.
Oh, I know.
So you'll let us know, Jeff.
Treasurer's point with you, Eileen, what, what do we have left to deal with in the joint meeting?
Uh, we have four, and we can do them another time if you want. We have the fire department lease, which I don't know what you know. And we were hoping, I know Steve's been involved, that he wanted to be involved on that from the finance committee, so we had, you know.
Can you just tell me?
So we have the fire department lease, ship payment, regionalization data, with community center fees, usage and payments, you know, that's all over the place.
Hey, so.
She goes a hundred miles.
Does it slow, Justin? I am on, I'm on, I am on three neurons now. At the end of the day. Leash.
You haven't started by six.
No, no, actually, I'm gonna do get a call. I'm having a home inquiry.
It's D cap, don't believe it.
Not. Fire department, I can email to you, lease ship payment, regionalization data, and community center fees and usage payments.
Yeah.
The Lake Garfield working group budgets, I don't know if you're making them a budget item, but we wanted to handle on that sooner rather than later from the town meeting. Uh, the audit, I think we're pretty clear on that, but we wanted to discuss it. And then this new issue that cropped up among the finance committee, and the year income rises, closeout appropriation transfer request, you know, timeline at the end of the year, what can be transferred, what, how would we, you know, bring that all in? Which that, we can wait on that.
Can we, uh, can we shoot the go for a few minutes for each item?
Yeah, let's do it.
We, uh, I'm not, we're almost done with the, uh, lease for the fire station. It's a one-year lease, but it also has a statement that we will renegotiate a new lease by February of next year, more than a year lease. There, they have some small suggestions to it, all run by the lawyer, like we can let Snowplow and the draft, stuff like that. There's nothing major there. There is a process for giving the ninety thousand dollars that has been voted in more. The basic process that we've all, we've agreed on, they will give us a, they wanna, we approve what they, capital investment they wanna do for that ninety thousand. They provide a time schedule for the work. They provide copies of the invoices to us. We write a check to the moderate fire company for the invoices, and we're in agreement. They, they understand that we need this for when we're being audited, and we just can't write them a write check, so they under, they're agreeing with that process. There was a question about, uh, the only question I don't have an answer for. There was a question about, uh, the only question I don't have an answer for was about a live, commercial liability insurance. What is a good number, what is, uh, Dell told me an hour ago, he, you know, what is, what is a standard kind of number for commercial liability? They have, what we have asked them to do is not only to insure the building, but to have a different kind of a liability. Someone gets hurt in the pavilion, they're not suing us, you know, they have liability insurance. So I was gonna write you, no, Roger, if we could talk to our insurance person, what is like a standard liability insurance for that kind of operation? So because it right now reads that, you know, the town, well, no, reads that the town can decide what the deductible is. So, you know, they want some clarity on that. I think what we agreed is we get more information in this week and then try to come through. But I probably have a ten minutes to email to the lawyer and then I'll call up, I'm called. There will be a cover letter that we're working on in agreement about, you know, the um, you know, the, this is only the first stage. In the contract, there's called for a meeting in the fourth quarter of this year to discuss their financial conditions, what they're talking about capital projects. About opening up the communication so we have better understanding, we can do better capital planning on that. Um, I think I've got about all covered. Um, there's not, you know, I think we're close to closing with them.
Two years.
No, I know, but you know, yeah, it's been Dell and I and he's going back and it's been easy to work with and we have a very good honest relationship, we love each other. So.
So I I have two questions, does that include your capital worksheet, Roger, like are they? Because when you say that they understand we can just write them a check because of audits, it's not just audits, that are we actually getting usable finished projects, not just.
No, it's for the ninety thousand dollars with the warrants that we're going to go to. A year ago when we gave them the warrant, they couldn't based on getting the warrant, having a contract.
No, I understand.
So we knew that we want a multiple year contract because we wanna protect our investment, so that's how, that's the approach we took.
No, I understand that, I'm saying when we operationalize that, we sign it, they get the ninety grand, we just don't.
No, you don't give them, they don't get ninety grand, but they. They actually, they say, I'm gonna do this project, like, let's say they can't trust and said, you know, I wanna put a bad man, so on the bad.
Right, so is that.
We're not, it has to be approved by the select board. We will get, keep a very simple process, for example, the apron needs to be fixed. You know, okay, we wanna repair the apron, it's gonna cost forty five thousand dollars, here's the schedule for this.
Here's the question, so is Roger's capital worksheet, have they done this and they've done that, you're not going that deep yet?
Uh, I hadn't thought about putting on the capital.
No, I I think, well, this one is already been appropriated.
It it's not about the appropriation, it's about the project and getting it done and making sure that it's coming in budget and actually happens. Because that's been one of the issues, right? So it, I mean, all this sounds great, but then when you put the pedal to the metal, you know, oh my God, the apron now is eighty thousand, not forty five.
They're gonna work off of this, you know, they, they're not, they're not gonna.
And all I'm suggesting is that we use Roger's capital worksheet because it includes every item that we wanna make sure it's gonna stay within the bid, right, Roger, that's why you did it.
Wow, I didn't do it.
No, I mean, that's why, yeah, spreadsheet.
The spreadsheet's already there, the cap, the capital budget worksheet is.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a good.
That's what you mean, if you mean the spreadsheet, it's got all the capital.
I did, yes.
Right there, the Rama.
We all did, you know, what I'm saying is it's, it's, let's use it for the operational part of the plan. It's it's.
It it that that is on our side of the building to do.
Yeah.
They they have projects and that's a whole wide deal, the fourth quarter meeting, that we get an understanding where they are financially. One of the things that kept us from going to a multiple year contract now, we just may have all the numbers for what they're costing, you know, insurance and all the different things that make up their budget. So that is something they know that they have to work on.
Yeah.
You wanna go on to the next?
Community center fees, usage payments, you know, the community center has changed significantly, I forgot the percentage, but it's become a bigger part of the budget. It used to be just a change from, I call it Roncom, but it's whatever that uh, the the housing unit is, or Longham, housing unit.
Valley Galley.
Valley, I call it Roncom. Valley Galley, but now Valley Galley, just so you know, is not self-sufficient anymore, it needed quite as much.
No, it is self-sufficient, kind of, I mean.
But it was, wait, wait, I'm sorry, Valley Galley used to spin off the money from Montreux, who used to spin off money for the community center.
We used to get like twelve thousand dollars each year in rent and spend on the community center.
But that's not happened, that's.
Then Valley Galley actually needed improvements, so we couldn't take all the money.
So Valley Galley itself sustaining, but the community center now has a bigger deficit. And we noticed if we're on the Monterey list, some things are free, some aren't, they got yoga things, so there's no rhyme or reason to how they're charging people fees, what's free, how to do it, so I think uh.
I think there may actually be a rhyme or reason, I don't know that it's a hundred percent consistent, but they do charge, I believe, in some instances, like out of town. Or if they know that there's a play and the play's charging money, they want some on it, but if it's a free event and no one's getting paid.
But we should have, we should really help them to think that through and.
We'll talk to Arjan Laurie.
I'll talk to Arjan, does anybody else wanna do it? Nobody?
Talk to Arjan Laurie, please, because when I talked to them before, they're very open to the idea of having a policy. I think they're closer, I think they're pretty close to having a a policy and I think in the past, there was some general guidelines about if it's in town people and it's free and no one's paying to go play ping pong or go do yoga together, then the community center wouldn't get any money. But if someone's charging for a class, then they pay the community center, something like that.
So if an out of town person.
Right, and then, right, and then what fees are being covered when people rent it, as well as any things that were transferred, like from the park department. Does that have to continue to go to free yoga or can they do it to subsidize other programs if yoga is underutilized?
So what, you you have a conversation, Arjan Laurie.
I'll do it, I'm I'm happy to.
Okay, great. Just, I'm just gonna suggest that you go in with the assumption that they actually.
Yeah, a policy and more consistency, we want.
Yeah, and no one is.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we just wanna work with them and try to help them, yeah, now, Arjan, yeah.
And I just, and I did just remember what budget worksheet you were talking about. I missed, I did put that.
And that would be a great thing, once they write to make sure they're, because it's a checkbox of making sure they're.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
They have a lot of.
See, I'm not crazy.
I remember, I just think if somebody has a capital proposal, these are all the things that's taken up.
So we made sure we have an all inclusive bid, because just getting a bid doesn't mean.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, for a year, we came back to it.
And I.
We already worked it.
Yes.
We did finally.
Oh, you remember, Roger, we had to put in a card here.
Isn't it the capital planning?
Yes, it is, so we're just saying, even even if it is already appropriated, that is a very good document to use to operationalize things, make sure we don't run out.
So I created a budget worksheet, I used it with Jim Hunt.
It worked good?
It worked out really well.
Yeah, so I, it's a good point. Um, audit, that wasn't mine, uh, would we wanna say about audit?
When was the last time it was on?
So we're wrap, so we are wrapping up the fiscal year twenty two audit.
Uh, fiscal year twenty three.
Fiscal year twenty three.
It skipped twenty two.
Uh, we skipped fiscal year twenty two. We have, we have fiscal year twenty one audit. So the reason twenty two was skipped, fiscal year twenty two. Different people said different things, but at the end of the day, my sense is the auditor was busy and never got around to that. What we're going to see, I think the most recent discussion on the slackboard was because we're, we have twenty one, because we almost have twenty three in our hands. If we take the money this year and pay for an audit of twenty two, then we can take money next year and pay for an audit of twenty four.
So you still wanna do it?
We can have all of it.
Well, I guess.
The first part was we agreed to do an audit every year, that was one commitment we all made, that wasn't really made before, so that was one thing, we wanted to make sure we're staying with that.
We've been doing annual audits, I think maybe from twenty seventeen maybe.
And then we missed.
And maybe it was partially like every year, because it used to be every three years, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
I believe part of the reason they started doing annual audits was when we borrowed for the library.
Yeah.
I'm flinging it on.
Yes, it's really managed to force that.
Yeah, and and we were applying for more grants and you really need to be updated for grant applications.
So it's, it's, I can't imagine completing twenty three if twenty two hasn't been done.
They're auditing twenty three and they're almost done.
Yeah.
They haven't touched twenty two.
In auditing, you move from year to year, it feeds on itself, so twenty three feeds on what happened in twenty two. So it's, it is interesting that they.
But what about when they were doing it every three years?
Oh, they only focused on that one year and then they would carry, they would take our numbers, basically, well, carried forward.
For the other two years.
Which is presumably what they did when they did twenty three without twenty two.
We tell them not to do twenty two?
No, because if you don't have the three consecutive years.
Of years, it affects your grant application.
It affects your grant applications and the way you're viewed by the state and the way the bank views you for loans.
And we wanna get.
So I think it makes a lot of sense to reel in that, yeah, I mean, you should, yeah, we'll do, but.
And then he said he could because the, uh, if, oh, I, when I talked to Tom Scam, right? He uh, he said that financially, since going with Eric Kinshirk and Mass Media Fund, we've, we've really sort of balanced out pretty well. So the year over year, it's it's gotten pretty good. So he said it shouldn't be, it it shouldn't be that hard to go back and do it.
Yeah, so we just wanted to make sure, and then there was an issue with paying it and Jeff with the sentencing opinion on that one, but we, you know, are gonna have to add that in next year, right? That's true.
I wanted to basically, yeah, just different way, just raise the money.
I know, no, not, we all wanted the thing, I'm just saying, so we want, just it's a flag, it's it's gonna look like a big increase next year, but it's not really because we paid. And then the last one, I think we should leave to Roger in long run, and we don't talk about, which is end of the year conferences, closeout appropriation, you know, all the stuff like, if it's a reserve fund, it's this, it's a camp, so that's your technical.
We were a little bit behind the ball this year, just because of transition.
Exactly.
Um, but that's all.
Anything else, anybody?
And actually, I think in some ways, we are tidying up loose ends better this year.
Very much better.
Because there were two loose ends that we never got.
Right.
And then you have to tie them up at the next town meeting.
We're not doing it as an emergency.
Right.
There's nothing this year that was, there was this big emergency, we weren't doing.
Well.
I wish I came to the finance committee.
Wasn't it all this other?
Well, my, my, my hair wasn't on fire. That was good.
And he's still, and he's still here.
It's not something like it was in a reasonable way, except that it was like, ish.
So is there anything else you don't wanna talk about?
Is there a creative process for encumbrances? A couple of them off, is that a point?
Yes, actually, it's really late, it's in August, it's in August.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It went, oh, this, this year?
Yeah.
So you've got a custom off and then the encumbrance is gonna move by a class?
Oh, so they, my understanding how it works is we, I basically submit a form based upon what those bills are, those encumbrances are. And then they create uh, line items in the budget that are the encumbrance lines, when the invoice comes in, it gets paid against that encumbrance line. But you can encumber stuff up to August.
But there's no approval process, I mean.
What do you mean by uh, uh, approval process?
Oh, somebody said, you know, I I forgot to order a new computer, like thirty thousand dollars.
That doesn't happen.
You know, you don't allow that to be encumbered.
Well, no.
It has to be in the budget.
I could.
Who approves it?
So I would. So.
So you all approve the encumbrances?
So so they they would come to me and say, oh, jeez, I need, I I I have ten thousand dollars left over in my budget, I wanna buy uh, computers. I I would have to say, well, first off, we need invoices, you need, you need to order it, have invoices get ready, these need to be put online, there's a whole bunch of stuff.
To be encumbered, it already got to be in in the process, you know, that's, but you're you're overseeing that, it's not up to us to move.
Correct, so I I did have someone say, well, I think I could really use a laptop. I said, well, I I ordered it from, I ordered, I spoke with our vendor, they ordered it, it's on my invoice and it comes in, well, I get the invoice and well, it comes, whatever, whatever.
I do have a question though, Roger. Whenever we keep forgetting to pay the lawn service for the cemetery.
Oh, God, we're gonna meet with live, that's my next question.
We find out about it mid or late July and we can't encumber it. Even though it was. I'm asking Roger.
Well, I'd have to find, I'd have to understand why not, but we should, we should be able to.
I'm gonna tell you why.
Cause can I tell you something, we're going to get bills from the previous fiscal year.
Right, but she didn't submit the bill.
If it's not the lawn. No, no, Eileen, if it's not the lawn service, last year it was the compost. And frankly, there was no one on the town side that messed up, the compost people forgot to submit, so there will be things.
I know, right?
Yeah.
My question is.
Yeah, that's why that's the.
If we find out things, and we will, in July and August, can they be encumbered?
My understanding from the town accountant is that you can encumber things up to August. If something comes in in September, that is like for May or June, then that's gonna end up having to go to town.
But how come we weren't able to do that with lawn services?
I don't, I don't know.
Last year, you mean?
I don't know.
It was a couple of years ago, it almost happened again last year.
Yeah, it's a year. Because there were no bills, she didn't encumber, she never gave us the bill.
We knew before the end of August, I mean.
Right, but Linda never produced the bill.
No, we had them before the end of August, I'm telling you, I think I was there.
I remember that.
If it, if it happened, if it hap, if it happens after a certain date in August.
Yeah.
It wasn't in August, it was mid to late July.
So you got the bill.
At the end of July fifteenth. And we knew that we had made the mistake and the funds couldn't be encumbered, we had to go to town meeting for it.
Was there money in the budget, was the budget line getting used up?
Yes, there was money in the budget, what I'm trying.
That doesn't make sense, so maybe we don't know, was under a different kind of.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is what is the process for encumbrance and and that's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, that's my, my question.
My my understanding.
Experience all this and it really can be nasty.
So so you have, you have a couple of different things here, you're talking, a couple of different things, you're talking about someone who comes up to me and says, I want, comes up and says, I wanna order something. I have the money in my budget, I wanna order something, I'd like to encumber money, that's one type of encumbrance. You have another type of situation where, at the point, all of a sudden a bill shows up that nobody had any idea about. And I believe it would be done the same way through this encumbrance form, because according to the, according to the town accountant, which I can go back and find this letter.
If it's August thirtieth.
It's like October thirtieth, August thirtieth, yeah, so something where you could still encumber, but I'll find out.
That makes sense to me, it was just contrary to my experience in previous years, in which the date was also the end of August. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarity on the process, that's all.
I'll find out.
Because there will be things this year, because there's a couple of things, even Roger, that you and I have been working on that I know are still, you know, outstanding. To some degree, so I was just trying to get clarity on the process, I think it's a good question.
A lot of things, it affects all the way up to the tax country.
Correct.
Okay, so, it's right, tax rate, it really does, so it's important to try to watch these things because, you know, if it's an open door.
We're also saying to vendors, you know, hey, we haven't gotten your bill yet, you know, people are regular vendors, you need to get that.
Like why we schedule that meeting on the. Right, to force the vendor.
That gives us room, not even the.
And and if we know it's August thirtieth, then on July first, we're sending out notes to people saying, hey.
That should be by July.
We notice, we don't have your May or June, you know.
So I'm gonna make a suggestion, I'm gonna make a suggestion.
We want the books to be closed.
Yeah, we want closed up, right.
Just close the books and we don't know your accounts.
So I'm going to add that also to the budget calendar, sending out end of the year encumbrance notices, and I do think we need some clarity because we also found with the budget line, it was reserve fund appropriations, like can we encumber any reserve fund transfer if they're out of money in the line? Like, there's a lot of complications to that issue, right?
So so I I, I don't know what happened last year.
You don't have to answer it.
I don't know what happened last.
It's on an agenda, he has time.
I don't know what happened last year, but according to the memo, this is the year in memo for this year, it says Thursday, August thirty first, twenty twenty three. Last day to submit encumbrance requests and articles carried forward requests to accounting.
Tell Mark that.
Which is similar to last year, and I assume has been similar and similar and similar. But my question was, how come we had this problem? And I think it was actually the year before that we really got debt, and actually, unfortunately, the service provider didn't get paid until we approved the town meeting. A small business that we, you know, that we were not paying, and I understand, you know, the service provider may have been a little late with the bill, that the department head was late to submit the bill, but how come it couldn't be encumbered? And why do we have to?
I think you're asking, I think you're asking a redundant question.
Sixty days after. It's past fifteen.
No, we were told when we got, when we learned it, that it has to go to town meeting.
Right.
But before we close, there's one other thing on the firehouse lease, we're gonna propose to the central register that we just put this out for good.
Oh, good.
That way that, you know, and the lawyer approved the wording I used for that kind of deal.
Quick question.
All right.
We're the firehouse with the lease.
I know, but he just says the.
Someone else might wanna leave it.
Doesn't cost you anything to do. And he says, nobody from the home bag, because you're raising, gets into the eighty eight amendment and you get, you're giving money to a nonprofit, he goes, you're just covering old bases.
I'm not speaking for the finance committee members, because they each speak for themselves, but as a committee.
Just a little bit.
As a committee, thank you, the working relationship, and I think it's really good that we dig into these issues ahead of time. And I'm sure we'll have more as the time goes on, right?
I also think it's great that we have a collaborative relationship with each other.
Agreed.
So like with finance committee, sometimes we quite get along. We don't have to see eye to eye on everything, but the idea that it's a collaborative working relationship.
Sure, cover everything.
Going for the same reason.
Yeah. The twenty. And so our next meeting should be before October, before that decision comes up for the bank thing, whatever.
Yep.
Have you wanna? Thank you, the finance committee is during?
Should we have a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, finance committee, okay, he does his hat on.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thanks so much, Roger, very good, very good.
I know, I keep hearing.
I know, I'm much.
It'll be nice.
All right.
See you on my. All right, everybody.
Plug, go, go plug.
I'm gonna close my.
Bye, Mickey.
Say, why is he dragging the chair back yet now?
Huh?
That's right, get rid of all our AC. Just give him.
I like the way he keeps the door locked, I hope it's for him.
Oops.
You want your horn?
Just to mess with him, what did they do?
Mess with him.
Sean, have you gotten that?
I saw it.
Oh, he did, did he offer actual?
No, he didn't offer it, yeah. I I. I said, I was, yeah.
Was that a year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
I was messing with you.
All right. So. Unfortunately, I report that we don't have a tracker to not catch the sign because.
You haven't met with her.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Next meeting. And hopefully, we'll be able to meet tomorrow, although we have her back.
I have her back from.
Are you doing a one-on-one meeting, is she coming to town, or you?
No.
I'll try to.
There is phone call or whatever, I mean, it's unclear to me if there's any reservations about that proposal, she is, doesn't.
I hadn't heard anything from her.
She didn't.
The last time I talked to her, she didn't really say anything about it, so.
And I'll mention at the meeting, uh, the the bank banker concern.
I think, I think she's aware of that, that issue we have.
But it may be worth if we mention.
Yeah. Uh, town administrator updates.
Updates and anticipated business, this actually has to do with the parkland acquisition, acquisition renovations for communities grant program. This actually goes with the OSRP, part of the OSRP grant, it's uh, uh. So we have to submit to to be reimbursed for the money that was spent on the uh, on the uh, OSRP grant process. We have to submit to this, for this park, an application that is to either requisition or improve a piece of parkland that we have. Um, so we have to submit this application, basically, that's a letter saying that we are, that the select board is behind it. At the same time, we also have to submit some language to the, for an article, that would be, that needs to be voted on at the uh, special town meeting, I guess is one of what happened. We don't have to actually, the town doesn't have to vote yes for it, even if, as long as you just put it on the warrant, and it gets voted on, we get reimbursed for the money that was, that's owed for the OSRP. It's a, I I don't know, if the previous town administrator found this grant and processed through the grant, there's there, so it's kind of a interesting process. Some of the language was, I was, had a little help with the language on that, put together, but basically, they just needed signed and submitted, that says we are behind.
By Thursday.
Grant by Thursday, to uh, for this money, and that, we will put it on a warrant and vote on it, so.
I'll move that we sign the letter in support of the park grant.
Second motion.
And just to make you aware, the the um, the grant is for money that Rob Hoots put together as a project for the Bidwell Park, as well as a little bit of work that's done across the Concomode by the library, which has to do with updating and adding additional signage and trail.
All right, well, we'll vote on the motion to approve water.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that letter is through, if you want to.
I'll move on, you said there's one other thing, this actually is one of the uh, the uh, permits, the the uh, select board permits, it's the uh, special event, theatrical event, and or one-day alcoholic beverage license, Dancing Greens Farm up on Blue Hill Road is having a dance, a two Dancing Greens shindigs, one on July twenty seventh, one on August uh, seventeenth, um, they submitted it as well as their check, twenty-five dollars a piece for fifty dollars, so there's, it's really strange on these, there's no other place for the select board to sign, but I'll give it to to uh, they update it. So that there's actually a place for the select board to sign their name, or at least initial.
Okay, I'm just curious to look that up.
Uh, so there's the, on the second page, or the third page is where a lot of information is.
How is that?
Yeah. So there'll be thirty people, it's already going on.
They did a dinner for thirty seated guests, people will begin with a tour of the farm, descriptions of local farming practices, serve dinner at the meal table in the center of the farm, like to serve natural wine drinks with dinner, purchase alcohol liability with kind of Monterey, listed addition insured. Well, it'd be easy to introduce guests to Dancing Greens Farms, connect people to farming through fresh seasonal food, build connections and highlight growers and make it sweet fire. Wow, they totally support that.
Yeah, so they're doing two of those names, they have uh, their limited liability insurance on there, as well as their liquor tips.
I will vote that we approve the temporary, what is it called, the?
Special event.
Special event for Dancing Greens Farm.
Second motion.
We'll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that is unanimously approved. And that's all I have. I do have a couple brief items under unanticipated business, just a couple of updates. So Roger and I had a meeting with Mary at Cardy yesterday morning, from the Collin Center. And kind of, had a discussion about how we had these ongoing projects, and weren't really sure about, you know, where we were headed, and what the priorities were, and just things weren't necessarily getting across the finish line, so we are going to work on a few projects uh, through the summer, and then starting in September, and she's gonna pull in some other people, because she personally is busy and away on vacation, and such like that, so other people from Collin Center will also be pulled in, charged at the rates according to the, you know, that we agreed to. Um, the three priorities right now are hiring an office assistant, so we, she has already put that um, up, and has sent it out to, I believe, eighty uh, communities, eighty individuals, you know, within different communities in the area. But she said that with these kinds of positions, word of mouth can be really, really helpful, so if you know people in other towns, whether it's, you know, neighboring, or even in anywhere in South County, this could be a position that's really good for someone who might have a part-time secretarial job, or part-time job in another town, it might pair really well together uh, for either some extra money, or to round out and make a full schedule. Um, so if you know people in other towns, I think you both do, in in various other towns, it might be worth to say, hey, is there anyone here in town that you know um, might like an extra couple weekends, or a couple night, some night hours. Uh, we also talked about making that position potentially um, flexible, in in the instance, maybe someone can only work days and they can't do minutes. We would rather get someone kind of started and working now, and we can always discuss during, you know, for the November town meeting, or for the annual budget cycle, do we wanna make this more hours, or maybe, you know, that person, you know, and and they wanna do minutes and all these other things, or maybe, you know, we wanna split up. So just, is there people out there who wanna do some administrative work in monitoring, so that's one update.
Honestly, I think you're better off having one job that's more hours, I, we tried splitting it up, we got zero.
Well, that was super split up, that was like eight and six, so now we're talking fourteen hours, but the point being, we could probably fill fourteen hours with dump stickers and that kind of stuff, and if that person says they'd rather just do that during the day, and they don't wanna come in
Right.
for, to take parks to mission, eighty minutes, right?
Except that dump stickers are gonna only last for a month.
Yeah, but there's always things, you know, there's always different things, so that being said, if they, if nights are a no-go.
Right.
Maybe we should record meetings.
Or maybe they record their meetings, and then they do it during the day, like.
So that's a possibility, so anyways, let's just say semi-flexibility, you know, in terms of nights.
I'd also like to see us maybe advertise locally instead of just do MMA, or whatever, like.
Yeah, well, Roger's gonna look at virtue.
I know, he's took it, and virtue, well, also, they're expensive, but the shopper's guide maybe isn't quite as expensive.
So that's one thing we're working on, employee handbook and personal policies, Mary's gonna, and gonna pull in someone else from Collin Center as well, but that is a priority for the next couple of months. Um, we talked briefly at the end of the meeting about a lot of our payroll pickups, that have reared their head in the past couple of months. And Collin Center is gonna help hopefully streamline some of those and be a resource, so those are our three summer projects. And then in September.
Do they have experience with this particular county attendants, because it seems like it's all focused on how that thing works.
I think they're trying to give recommendations about better ways to do this.
Okay.
They do have experience with payroll, because sometimes payroll is a little bit more of like an HR function, so they do have experience.
Like if there's problems with the particular program, then.
Well, there, to some degree, Susan, the problems are with the program, but to some degree, I think the problems are with how we've chosen to utilize the program.
Fair.
And what we've kind of expected of stipend elected and other stipend individuals is not, I think it's a recipe for problems.
Problems, I agree.
So we're gonna look at, you know, as we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, anyways, that's a priority for the summer. After the summer, I kind of uh, said that I do think that it's a, they're a good resource to have in our back pocket for various issues that arise, so um, Mary suggested a bi-weekly standing meeting with Roger starting in September, which I felt like was, is worthwhile. Uh, we are paying hourly, but I think that there's enough that comes up um, that they can also help streamline and help uh, figure out ways so that we don't have to spend all this time cleaning up payroll in the back end.
Yep.
So that's kind of where we're at, they do wanna continue working with us, there was a little, between the town administrator transition and some personal business that she had, um, we realized we have to recalibrate and pull in some other people from Collin Center, but we will keep that relationship going, and that's kind of update.
Um, is the the personnel manuals, like, is that now they're going forward with it, or like?
That is a priority.
Right, but I'm just trying to, like, cause I had sort of said, I was.
I think you should reach, I think you should reach out with, to Mary and say, we're re, we're re, you know, uh,
Picking it up.
reigniting the fire under the handbook, and not to burn it, but to get it across the finish line. Um, and who should you work with on specific policies, because I know it was someone else who's not married, she's gone for two weeks in the next, in like a week, she's leaving for two weeks or something like that.
For like a week, which is fine, I don't care who she has that up there, I just want two seconds.
Yes, so why don't you reach out to her, I think that's appropriate, if anything, CC Roger, to keep him in the loop, but I would rather you take that under your uh, winning, um, because you have the background and contacts of a couple of years of work on it.
Under what?
Um, another update, bylaw review committee meeting, I was looking at the next few weeks, um, is it, there's not a whole lot going on that we need to do in the next couple of weeks, I mean, we have some fire hallies, we have the treasury contract, but we don't necessarily need to meet every week for the next month or two. That being said, bylaw review committee wants to schedule me to hammer that out, is I have preferences on when that is?
Well, if we, if we're feeling like we don't have that much, do we wanna give ourselves two weeks to read through it, and that way he can post the meeting and stuff?
I'd meet on the twenty third. I I would meet on the sixteenth, pay him out the treasury contract, I don't, you know, you're right, maybe Frank let the fire hallies do.
Maybe it's not.
I would be close, but we can't sign that after that, it has to be posted for thirty days under the central register before we sign on. Now, but the Dell is going away, he's not around too much more, so we wanna get it done, we can have it all formalized and ready to sign.
And then Jeff sit there.
So I think if we do the twenty third, that gives him plenty of time to let his committee know if anybody wants to comment or post it, or you know, your meeting, and um, and it's long enough that two weeks to focus, like, I urge you guys, if you wanna prepare for it, don't wait.
Can we make it a week later? Do you wanna do a week later?
Okay.
Tuesday the thirtieth?
Yeah. Sure. And that is, I think I've said this about a couple of town meetings now, but that is gonna be the core of the November start of the meeting. But every week you add something to that one.
I know, like, yes, so I I brought this up with Frank, lots.
Yeah.
I'm only raising it out.
Can I finish one on anticipated business, cause it's quick?
Yes, yes, go for it, absolutely.
Five or connect, reach out, I think to everybody, and they're just wondering when they can start.
Yeah, people, yeah, who wanted to know when to start.
Yeah, what are we waiting?
We're, are we waiting for Concom?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'll find out. I was told by one member of the Concom that they should go for a formal determination, determination of eligibility, but I'm not sure if that's required, if there, if there's no good reason that they should.
They don't fit either of the two things they opened with, so.
I don't think so, uh, well, my my whole, my whole intent was to make sure that they didn't have to go in front of the Concom.
Right.
Well, I will, I would.
That's my whole intent for doing it, you know, so.
I will, um, I will respond.
Not that I don't think the Concom does.
I'm gonna respond to Adam and CC, the agent of the Concom, and say that as far as we know, we're all good to go, and if the agent has any questions or concerns, please let us know, and the flags are up, and uh,
Yeah.
um, trees are marked, yeah, so I will email Adam and say, give me the light.
I should, I should say that a different way. I just wanted to make sure that they didn't have to come back around, or were any issues were gonna happen, because they were so close to the lake, not that they shouldn't have to go in front of the Concom.
They should if they need to.
If they, if they needed to, I did, I wanted to make sure.
But you know that they're far enough from the lake, and not high enough that we believe that they're not subject to either of the dual.
It happened, they were. Yes. Well, this is the strength thing, I was reading the, the scenic mountain act.
Yeah.
And it's everything above fifteen hundred feet, or any property that is great, that has an angle greater than fifteen degrees.
Yeah.
But as far as we can determine, that that site is not.
That's what I was hoping for.
Right.
Yeah.
It's fifteen hundred feet. No, no, I didn't think there was anything there that's fifteen degrees.
Pretty do.
Yeah.
It's pretty steep.
Unanticipated, sorry, Susan, for cutting off, but that's all my.
No, no, I wanted to. Um.
You were talking about November, short term numbers.
Oh, someone had a conversation with Mari, and she independently brought up that she had a concern about the number of LLCs. That she, her gut, her instinct is that she believes that, like, there are some LLCs that are like, I'll call them family LLCs.
Their students, right.
Right, that exist because, you know, they're now third generation, and there's too many heirs, and so come to LLC. But her impression is that the majority of these are, that these are companies purchasing properties for the purposes of operating unregulated hotels slash short term properties. I could throw hanging fruit from my perspective, right, that would be very easy, even if we didn't touch anything else, to just say, absolutely, technically, we're already forbidden, but we absolutely will not allow the, so LLCs incorporated to run SDRs.
And so how can we distinguish between?
Distinguish between, I'm not sure.
Because I know I have neighbors that
Right.
where the LLC is the property owner.
Right.
Um.
It's a good question.
And also.
I think, I think the answer is residence, and that's what they did and offered, and I believe that's what they've done.
But my. Oh, they need live some, the pro, the homeowners need to live in the property for so many days.
Yeah.
And how is that pleased? I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying.
Right, I'm I'm not sure that that's pleased the same way everywhere, um, but at the very least, if there's no individual who is a moderate resident, we can be certain that no one is living there.
Except, well, if they're not a voter, if, what do you mean by resident?
Where they pay taxes as a person, a person.
Yeah.
Needs to live here enough days, they are ma, that that person, not the LLC, but the person, is a Massachusetts resident. Is a Massachusetts resident listed at that address and paying taxes to the state of Massachusetts. Because if that, if there's no individual who meets that criteria, if no individual living there enough days to, to qualify as a resident.
But I mean, what about second homes where there's no Massachusetts residents, but the LLC is the owner?
Whether they're voting here.
And they come up for skiing and boating.
Kinda nice for them.
But you think, I don't think that we can ban that. I mean, there's a lot of LLCs on the lake already where the LLC is the property owner.
What do you?
And for generations, people have been going skiing and, and boating.
Yeah, but the people that are going skiing, boating are the people that are family members. It's not being rented.
So you, then you're saying to prevent them from Airbnb?
Yes, it's strictly about short-term rentals. It's strict, they can, yeah.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Sure, if they wanna buy a part of the prospective property and have long-term rental, I, I applaud them.
Yeah.
If the LLC exists to allow multiple family members to own a property and they're happily going along, I have no problem with that. If the LLC is buying the property in order to run a short-term rental hotel, I have a problem with that. I don't care that we're getting taxes from it. They're taking that property out of residential habitation and I have a problem.
I just don't know how we're gonna be able to distinguish.
I think the way I saw it and the way that Alfred does it, and many, and Richmond apparently does it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tammy is gonna get you the.
Their, their new version, yeah, Richmond's.
The bar and uh some of those, cause she, she was talking to the select board before I mentioned.
Yeah, there's a lot of LLCs and like I said, some of them are people that I know have been generational.
There's, there's not a lot of families that are.
Right, but what Mari is saying is that she's been tax obligated for a lot of years. And this is a substantive change from the past.
Oh, I understand, and I'm not thrilled with, uh, you know, and I know of even, I think that there's at least one house that's being built for the sole purpose of short-term rental.
Uh, there's more than.
So that isn't great, probably.
Right, and.
But I also don't know that I'm ready to say. It'd be nice if there was some way to distinguish between a house that's being built to be owned by an LLC and for the sole purpose of short-term rental versus. Which is essentially like a, a hotel. Like, we're building mini hotels versus a family that has an LLC that owns a property and goes skiing. And, and they wanna rent, you know, it out for a few months. I think in some towns they've done, you can rent it out for no more than ninety nights or something. I might, if, if that's something that we could work in there, I would be, I think that would.
I'm totally cool with that.
Be cool.
Listen, Vicky will tell you something though.
So, uh, in Richmond, they have ninety days, and if you think about it, I mean, I mean eighty, did I say ninety? Ninety, eighty days. And.
It's almost the entire year for the weekend.
That would be, you know, so if you're renting for skiing weekends or summer weekends. It's, uh, if they're two-night weekends, like Friday and Saturday night, and they're out by twelve, that's what they do next door to me. And, um. Then you can have like forty weekends a year. If it's a three-day weekend, you still got half of the weekends of the year.
Mm-hmm.
That you're gonna, and like, my daughter says, and she's seen it where she is, you know, essentially every weekend you have another fiftieth anniversary party.
Well, there should be some way, I mean, if you, if you needed to word it carefully to say, you know, no more than, you know, twenty-five weekends or, there's a, there'd be a way.
Twenty consecutive days or whatever.
To, to word it.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I think looking at other peoples would be helpful, uh, you know.
Yeah, and, and there's a number of communities have done, I like, and Alfred does one, but my point is, I'd like to see us put something on there, yeah.
Through the state, you can get a list of who is running, running short-term rentals within, because.
Can we, or can we only get a list of how many there are?
Well, when you're online, I, I don't know what happens if you call and.
Ah, okay.
But you can go online and download, it basically just gives you the road, like.
Yeah.
Like, so there's Corvone, Hoopla Road, or.
Which isn't helpful.
It is, but I think you can go get specifics because to do official, even if to do an official short-term rental, you have to get the.
The state has the info.
ID number, you have to get the ID number because then that's what you have to submit to the, the online.
Right.
Online providers, so that all the taxes.
The state has the info, the question is whether we can get access to them.
Yeah.
But I think it would be worth finding out, and my goal is to in fact, collect. The versions from the various other towns.
Yeah.
I'm basically saying that I would like to attempt to put something on them.
Yeah.
And even if it gets turned down for reasons, then I'm happy to try again at the next meeting, having altered it according to what people are suggesting. But we can't just keep not doing it. If that is all I'm saying.
Well, so, so how about this? Yeah, we have a, a, a short summary here, do you have this? Um, this just talks about Southwick, um, Lee.
Where did this come from?
Melissa sent it in September.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if it's worth Great Barrington.
Right, the Great Barrington one is possibly the worst one. It's terrible.
So you already know these, and then it would just be, uh, Southwick, Lee.
Does that say? No, oh, this is also, sorry, I can't really read it from here. Um, of all of the ones that have been announced, I, Southwick, I'm not familiar with one, but the ones around here.
Yeah.
Probably offered and the, the Richmond ones are the ones, and offered to me, it's, I think, forty days total.
Cause we have, we have over sixteen, we have over sixteen properties that have LLCs part of them, but.
They're, they're pretty rare.
But some of them are generated.
So it's only part of the. But when you go through the download, but when you download that file from the state, it's like twenty-five, or short-term rentals.
Yeah, some of them are, yeah. Twenty-five, that's it?
Yeah, it's not a huge number.
Of LLCs.
That are registered, that are registered short-term rentals.
No. No, you're saying.
They're LLCs, they're.
Well, I, I don't know, I did a.
Oh, yeah, right.
Total right.
Right, right, right.
For short-term rentals.
Yeah, I'm surprised that it's only twenty-five because there's about eighty properties listed.
Well, there's, there's.
If you go to the, if you go to the, um, Airbnb.
Airbnb.
It's hard to hide too, I mean, they can't, to some degree, you can't hide because you have to put yourself on Airbnb or the RBO.
Yeah.
No, you don't.
Well, yes, you could call, you need to call.
But the majority, the way, it very least the ones on there. It's a worrisome thing if there's a bunch of properties on Airbnb that aren't showing up on that list.
Yeah, so I have to figure it out, cause uh, I, I downloaded the list a while back and it wasn't a lot. I just tried to help people.
I know. Exactly, so it just makes me wonder what the deal is. Anyway.
Well, you wanna handle, you wanna tackle that and come to us with something?
Yes.
I'm all for it.
Okay, um, what's the status of the Sanders Road public, Sanders Road public issue?
The Sanders.
Yeah, Road, Col.
The, the, the one for the Concom.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, in Concom, that was, uh, um, put off until we got a new, um, emergency order, the rules, because they, um, with some new dates.
So we're still waiting?
So we're still waiting.
Okay, um, so.
And we may well, did you, cause I was at the Concom meeting and I think you may have discussed this a little bit last week too.
We didn't.
But, uh, the gist of it was, from my perspective. Um, we may eventually pay a consultant to help us put the bank back together.
Right.
But. At least my concern was, it's not right to require a consultant before the Concom has even ratified the enforcement order. Because that's atypical.
Although I guess an emergency enforcement order doesn't require, uh, single.
Understood, understood, and, and they could potentially even require that you hire a consultant before the meeting. It just doesn't really, uh, it's not really the right way to do it, maybe. I mean, this is just my opinion.
Right.
But you can just also say, stop what you're doing. And you have to, before the meeting, stop and maybe take this immediate action, put up silk fencing, and we'll ratify the enforcement order. And then at the meeting, when the, you know, within a few weeks, cause they meet about every month, they can ratify that enforcement order and then also say, oh, and now you have to go hire a consultant. But don't say, you have to sign a four thousand dollar agreement, which Mike Germaine and other members of the Concom and other people in the room said, that four thousand dollars is only the tip of the iceberg, that doesn't give you anything.
Right.
So it's almost bad money in the sense that tell us down the road, you need to spend ten or twenty thousand dollars and say. You need to put four thousand dollars into this that's gonna get you almost nowhere before the Concom has even ratified the enforcement order. And frankly, I think it's a worthwhile thing to do because when the Concom sat there at the meeting, they didn't ratify the enforcement order.
Cash.
So there's a reason why, there's a reason why you can place an enforcement order with only one member of the Concom, and there's also a reason why it has to be ratified by the commission.
Right. By the commission, okay.
Because it, for the whole reason you have a commission.
Right.
Anyway, sorry.
No, I, I think that was worthwhile. Thank you for that, actually, it was helpful. Um, so, one of the things that got brought up last week was that we have our waste management. Sent us a con, a one-year contract for recycling services from July of twenty twenty-four to, to the end of June of twenty twenty-five. And it went to the lawyer and then it got brought here and I'm like, what? Because as part of the municipal advisory board. Um, we have a, we are part of a five-year contract that as I understood, it doesn't end till June of twenty twenty-five. And they are in the process of completing the contract negotiations for the new five-year contract, which has to go to town meeting because it's too many years. And I'm like, why are they giving us a one-year contract on extreme use? Um, so I have, now that Roger sent me that contract, then I've sent it out to the, the MAB at Quinsy Report People, or the. Executive Committee that's working on that, and maybe I got it wrong, maybe the current contract ended this year? I don't know, but that's definitely not been my impression in the entire year we've been discussing this, so I'm waiting to hear back to see what that is.
Okay.
Um, and quite confused. Um, and I think, oh, and just to give you guys a heads up, the planning board meeting this week. Is going to include the housing, um, so BR, they asked BRPC to. Come up with some ideas about what options we had to, for housing here, including what changes. We might be able to make to the zoning rules, um, and what other types of things the town, the planning board could work on that would give the town options for housing things. Um, so I'm going to that to find out what the updates are, and part of my, uh, goal also is that having seen the, the plan that Foresight generated. I would really like to see, there are, I know some members of the planning board that are extremely enthusiastic about trying to do this. Um, I'm gonna wait and see what happens at that meeting, but I'm thinking I'm going to end up reaching out to Construct and maybe seeing if one of the planning board members will work with me. And with the construct people and go look at that site to see if they would be interested and then to try to come up with what we have to do to make it happen.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want this to be on the tenure plan. Right, I would really like to see this be something that can happen.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I saw they, uh, they're working with Casellas in, in Wabro, I think, stake something big.
Big, yeah, oh, you hadn't seen that?
No, I know it's happening, so I am, it was just from Berkshire recently because it, because it, uh, got a bunch of money.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
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 They got a bunch of money, and it was like, it's fourteen units, it's quite expensive.
Yeah.
It was like eleven plus two, it was like a.
Yeah, eleven plus two, so maybe it was thirteen, thirteen eleven, yeah. Um, anyway, I just, it, it's, we're not gonna manage that in units, but I'd like to see us package something.
Do I have one update? Aren't those flowers yellow?
Yes. Nice, very red.
Where did those come from?
Where did those come from? Roger?
Japio. Decorated, decorated the town hall.
Very nice, very nice.
I've, I've been waiting to see how long it took somebody to notice, obviously, a long time.
I didn't know they weren't there before. Yeah, that's the thing, I didn't notice, but I didn't, I, I, I was just assuming I didn't notice them before.
I know they didn't, it feels so well. It feels so well with the building.
Yeah, and it's, I thought it was part of the July fourth decoration, did they have?
Um, any, anything else, Frank?
No, I don't have any. Would you wanna go over your notes that you did for last week's meeting?
Uh, I did, I sent out the minutes for.
Yeah, six twenty-five.
You gotta start bringing your day from print or men, oh, you printed them out, alright.
You know, that was old school.
Do, do you have minutes?
It's gotta be all in print.
I'll work on it. You know what I was, I was very happy, I almost went ahead and thought I was doing July two as well, I just.
I bet you, I, I bet you're gonna say you would already gone ahead and done like August first.
Um.
Oh, what did I miss out?
Well, people say don't print it, cause it's bad for the environment, but also being, which is like fair.
Oh, 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 oh.
But also.
My, like, my father was a printer, I have to have everything.
If you're on your computer, isn't that used electricity, and you're used real electricity, which has to be generated?
It's still bad.
Yeah, I don't know, that, I mean, depends how, how slow of a reader you are, if you're on your computer for an hour, I don't know.
That really still.
At what point, how long do you have to be on your computer to make it worse than printing a page?
Not at all.
But how many pages, I mean, in this case, a wonderful lot of pages.
I could tell you that this paper is just a tree with water, you think about it, all the chemicals that made your.
But I've had this since twenty sixteen.
It doesn't matter.
I don't, gotta do laptop every year.
Anyway, moving on.
Finally.
And yet, right.
No, no, I, I printed it, but I was fine with it.
Okay.
You know, you can.
So you wanna move to print?
Yes, I'll make a motion and we include the minutes for the seven-two twenty-four meeting.
And I will second that.
I vote yes.
Yes, and I'm assuming you're.
And all of us kidding, just cause I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, um, I did send out the, the minutes to everybody, so.
Oh, go ahead and push them.
Okay.
Were there any documents?
No.
Uh-oh, were there any documents? Were there documents? Yeah.
Everything was verbal, if the guidance.
No, but there are documents, like the transfer, there's those.
Okay, like transfers.
To those get come in.
Yeah, I'll add any documents if it, if it's, if it's not too controversial.
Okay. It shouldn't be, I don't think there was anything controversial, it was just like Peter the text.
Yes. Are you getting it all squared away with Peter's? Okay, good.
P. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I found out like an hour before the meeting, kind of had an emergency.
Always have a thing.
Not at all, like, no problem. Um, I'm sorry, I'm terrible about the documents, so thank goodness for you.
Well, I'll figure it out when I go to put, I'll put it in the format and to your degree it isn't already, but it looks like it is, and I just have anything.
I tried. I tried to just pop the air for them.
I have it down now a little bit, I have the template, uh, so, oh, and I got all the letters out to everybody.
There is one other thing, the mileage.
I'll see Chris.
Oh, yeah, I think we've talked about that.
So, right, so I found, but I found a, okay, so Roger raised the question of the mileage reimbursement rate at last week's meeting. And I said, I thought it was in the personnel manual, and it is, and I.
Yeah, yeah, you sent it out.
And I sent it out.
I printed it down.
But the question is, do we, is, is there a process? So it just says in here, employees authorized to travel using a personal vehicle will be reimbursed at the mileage reimbursement rate established yearly by the Internal Revenue Service. I presume, uh, mileage will be calculated, but I presume that means we don't have to act to update.
We don't have to. And the more things that we can put in employee handbook so that we don't have to authorize vacation carryover to that.
We don't have to act, right. Right, so.
Just to, and I think this is a great one.
Done.
But, and also, when we're, when you're doing the employee handbook, please, like, and I think we've already had this discussion, I think, I at least had it with Roger.
I found it and.
If there's questions about vacation carryover, it should just be a set, in my opinion, at least a set number. And I think as little as possible should be up to the discretion of the current board, or the current select board, because it's just not good for anyone. It clogs up the select board, and it's inconsistent for the employees, and there's unclear expectations.
Yeah. Yep.
So, I think you ought to do that, but just.
So we just. No, but I think, I, I'm pleased to hear you say it. It's now in my notes, so it is, and I don't know what that magic number is, but then I have some good ideas.
Yeah, well, I know one thing that Mary and I had talked about previously was like, our, the vacation we offer has been outdated and you kind of know it because each employee that we've hired. That I've been here, each full-time employee that we've hired, we've often. Deviated from the vacation time that's in the handbook, because it's just outdated.
Yeah. Because it's revisionist, yeah.
So maybe, I'm not sure where that stands, but.
Yep.
And then as far as carryover and things like, the more standardization.
Yeah.
And, and there should hardly ever be anything that says, you know, this, the select board should decide each year.
It's terrifying.
The one, the one that I, it's gonna be a hard nut to crack is COLA. And I almost wish it could, we could just say, whatever. Social Security uses or three percent or something, because it's, this arbitrary. Select board and finance committee decide at some point between December and March is really awkward.
Maybe I'll, I'll ask her what other towns do, but I'm betting that it's all.
But there might be another town that's gotta figure it out.
I mean, I don't know, I suspect nobody wants to be pinned down to one particular choice because they want that freedom.
Well, Social Security might say eight percent.
Right, so they want the o, option. Right, so they want the o, option to not, to, to be able to, in a bad year, not get big raises and, and. But I think what ends up happening is that when you do that, you have a tendency to never.
Well, I have this.
And then you get the big bump because you're not competitive anymore.
I have a, a little, an idea, and it's not perfect, but my employer in the handbook, it says. At the employer, you know, if the board agrees or whatever the case may be.
Right.
All employees get seven percent of their salary at the end of the year into the retirement as a bonus. And so I said, I looked at the handbook and I was like, that's kind of confusing. It's just kind of arbitrary if you get the seven percent of retirement. And what I was told was that pretty much every year, the seven percent is, goes into retirement and they kind of plan on it. And there was one year where they were just, it really in the red.
Right.
And they just didn't do the seven percent. And again, it's arbitrary and unexpected, but to some degree. We have to allow for their, we may have a really bad year, things may be really tough, and so we can't give it, but what's the least uncertain? And I don't feel like that's a horrible way to do it, like all employees will get COLA equal to the social security number. You know, at the discretion of the select board or whatever the case. So I forget the way that is worded in that handbook, but it, it kind of isn't great because it's like, whoa, what if you just, I'm just not getting it, that's not really fair.
Right. Right.
But it kind of is also good because it sets some parameters other than the select board will come up with a number out of a magic hat.
Well, and it's maybe what we wanna have is that, you know, the, the, the select board will use the social security. Or it's all such pretty, whatever, the name of that.
Yeah.
Um, as their guidance for setting costs of letting a tenant, that's vague and yet makes clear what you're supposed to be using.
Yeah.
As your guideline, but the, at the end of the year, at the end of the day, I can't imagine that anyone's gonna be okay with saying, we'll always do like social security.
Yeah.
You know, but we do know from experience, going years without giving reasonable COLA, this is, is a problem in Silver, because then when it catches up with you, it kicks your butt. Anyway, okay.
All right, ready to adjourn?
I made a motion, we're adjourned, are we?
I love this idea.
Second.
Wait, are we meeting next week? Or are we not meeting for three weeks?
Oh, I don't think we're skipping three weeks.
Okay, we're just meeting with by law review in three weeks.
We'll meet with by law review on the thirtieth, but, uh, between the sixteenth and the twenty-third, we should probably meet once.
That's good with sixteen.
Is the twenty-third bad? Okay.
Okay, uh, that's fine, I mean, so yes, next week, but not the weekend.
And we don't have. If we don't have to meet the sixteenth for some odd reason, we won't, but it's likely we'll have a shorter meeting. Say that.
It's an every time, it's so true.
Well, I'm. All right, all right, there is a motion to adjourn and it's seconded, so we'll call a vote.
I vote yes.
Yes. Uh, unanimous vote to adjourn the meeting at, uh, seven thirty-seven PM.